Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of November 19th, 2024.
I'm so sorry, it's on silent.
I'm gonna wait.
Jimi Hendrix.
May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, present tonight, Ms. Corbett, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Mr. Bowen, Sherry Quirk, and Mr. Sullivan on Zoom.
Absent.
Absent tonight is Mr. Bessie.
Thank you. I declare that there is a quorum present. I'd like to have Lieutenant Gerard lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, without any injustice or all.
Thank you, sir. We have the great pleasure this evening of congratulating Lieutenant Gerard for something that he did when he was off duty. We do have a proclamation that Mr. Chadwick has practiced reading. So, we will read the proclamation, and then we're going to ask that we get to take pictures with you, and hopefully somebody's here that will take pictures. I don't know where the press is yet, so they should be here. With the... Oh, okay, good. So, we will be doing that. So, Lieutenant, why don't you stand up, please? And Chief, if you want to stand next to him, please. Go ahead.
All right. Whereas on June 12th, 2024, in the town of Rochester, a remarkable act of bravery and selflessness was displayed by Lieutenant John Gerard, who, while off duty, exemplified the highest standard of law enforcement and public service. Whereas Lieutenant Gerard demonstrated exceptional diligence and concern for public safety when he observed a vehicle operating erratically on Mary Pond Road, taking immediate action to investigate the situation, which could have resulted in grave consequences for himself and others. Whereas, in the critical moment, Lieutenant Gerard witnessed the vehicle accelerate into oncoming traffic lane and collide with a bridge guardrail at a high rate of speed. Whereas, without hesitation and with commendable courage, Lieutenant Gerard alongside bystander, risking his own life to pull the victim from the burning wreckage of the vehicle, embodying the true spirit of heroism and profound commitment to protecting and serving the community. Whereas, thanks to Lieutenant Gerard's swift and decisive actions, the life of the accident victim was saved, underscoring the vital role that police officers play in our society and the sacrifices they make daily. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby honor and commend Lieutenant John Gerard for his extraordinary bravery, quick thinking, and unwavering dedication to duty. His actions serve as an inspiring example of courage and selflessness, and we express our deepest gratitude for his service to our community. Given this 19th day of November, 2024, signed the Wareham Select Board.
We'll do some picture ops.
In front of the legs?
No, I'm the hired help.
You want to do in front of the flag?
Whatever you want.
I like the good idea.
Yeah, that's good.
Why didn't you say that sooner?
Nice job. Wow. It's like a movie.
Right in the middle, that way if you want to crop us out later.
My nice camera.
Chief, 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 chief. Guess what we're gonna do? Hold it. Ma'am, do it. Go that way, but I swear my prom lineup, that means, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Gerard. I know that other towns have congratulated you, thank you as well. Appreciate it. We do have a 7:15 hearing, but I can't call it until 7:15, so I'm going to jump over to licenses and permits. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes. I do. I move for the renewal of the following year-round Comen Vic license for the year 2025 under the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Law, pending all inspections as printed in the agenda, 1 through 8. With the correction of Woh-Lun Chinese Restaurant Scribner's error.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded to approve as listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve, pending the all inspections and sign-offs? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk? Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick?
I move for the renewal of the following year-round Comen Vic All Alcohol Beverage License for the year 2025 under the provisions of Chapter 138 of Massachusetts General Law, pending all inspections as printed in the agenda, 1 through 3.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as listed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve as listed? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment license for the year 2025, weekdays only, and under the provisions of Chapter 140, 130, 183A of the Massachusetts General Law, pending inspections for the FC2 Inc., DBA, The Fan Club, at 2859 Cranberry Highway in East Wareham, 02538.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following annual entertainment license for the year 2025, Sundays only, under the provisions of Chapter 136 of Mass. General Law, pending inspections for FC2 Inc., DBA, The Fan Club, 2859 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, 02538.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following year-round Retail Package Goods Store All Alcohol Beverage License for the year 2025, under provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Law, as printed in the agenda, pending all inspections under E1 through 3.
Aye.
How about second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read or listed. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following Class 1 License for the year 2025, under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Mass. General Law, Factory 5 Racing, Inc., Nine-Toe Road, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the following Class 2 Used Car Dealers License for the year 2025, under Chapter 140 of Massachusetts General Law, as printed in the agenda, G1 and 2.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as printed on the agenda. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Just so that the public knows, in order to renew licenses in the... here, there are several inspections that need to be had. They include the building department. Our town clerk has to let us know that there's a business certificate on file. The appropriate fire department has to sign off. The tax collector has to sign off that there are no funds owing to the town. And I think there's probably one or two more, plus the paperwork that has to be submitted. So, it's not just that we're running through this stuff. If we have 150 licenses, that's 150 places that our full-time employees have to go and inspect. From time to time, we ask the fire, the police department to look at things as well, and they are aware of what goes on. So, I just want the public to know that it's... it looks simple, and it's time-consuming, and that's why we read it into the record as pending the inspections. Okay? Let's go to 7B. Mr. Chadwick, please.
I move to accept the fiscal year 25 curbside revenue in the amount of $1.353,437.50.
Dollars.
Dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept as read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. C, please.
I move to accept donation from Solernos, Inc. to the Council on Aging in the amount of $2,325.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a generous donation from Solernos. Is there any further discussion on the motion to accept? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to accept a donation from William Legg to the Council on Aging in the amount of $75.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Is there any further discussion on the motion to accept the generous donation? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We still have four minutes. Do you have four minutes' worth of announcements or liaison reports?
Yes. I am one of two Select Board representatives on the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, and the WRA hosted an event last night at Danny Warren's Harborside Harbor... Harbor Side Harborview Restaurant, Danny Warren's place. And it was a presentation somewhat by Halverson, Ty, and Bond, the consultants that the WRA has contracted with, to come up with a plan for Merchant's Way that would involve a walkway, a kayak launch, and a fishing pier. And the most... one of the most important pieces is access across the railroad... safe access across the railroad tracks. And I'd say about 40 to 50 people came last night, and the real goal was public input. We went around... there was tables set up where you could see some drawings of possible concepts for the fishing pier, the kayak launch, the fence that would go up on the others, one of... one side or the other, I guess the other side of the railroad, and you had a chance to vote on various styles. So, it was really interesting, and I was glad to see that so many people came out to give their input into the planning.
Okay. So, the public, that's probably one of several hearings that will be held. And I think we need to explain that while we hear the public and while the WRA has heard the public, things don't happen overnight in municipal government. So, there may be a plan that moves forward. There will have to be funding. There will have to be acceptance. And the things take time to get done, particularly if they're worthwhile projects. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Liaison?
I do not have any.
Hmm, okay.
Oh, I have one.
Go ahead.
The Veterans Day Parade was wonderful. It was an hour and a half long, which for a town the size of Wareham is impressive. My husband and I were voluntold to be parking attendants at the parade, and that means we had a really great seat. And as always, I'm just astonished at the amount of dedication and commitment involved and the level of work involved in the group of people that put this parade on. And I know, Judith, you're one of them, so job well done to you and your group there.
Thank you. I'll just follow up. It is a 501(c)(3), and there are four officers. I happen to be one of them. We had great cooperation from our police department, from the fire departments. We had less than 80 entrants. We have... we had a lot of people hoping that the weather, which had been a drought for the whole year and then poured overnight, was going to clear. And guess what? It did. So, we were able to hold the parade because we didn't have a rain date. The parade... then there was the ceremony at Center Park, and then there was a meal where we fed over 150 people. The meal came from Warren's Harborview Restaurant, and it was... it was great. So, thank you for the compliments, but honestly, it was a team effort, and there were a lot of people who were voluntold to please step up and help. So, thank you. It is 7:15. Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to ask you to call the hearing.
I moved to open the 7:15 tax classification hearing attached to the town of Wareham fiscal year 25.
Motion made and seconded.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to open the tax classification hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Ch... Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is open. Ms. Nichols, would you identify yourself for the record?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jackie Nichols. I'm the Director of Assessing, and this is the 10th time we've done this together. I'm wondering if anybody needs a copy of the thing I sent out. We all set?
No, I looked it up.
Thank you for sending it to us.
So, the reason we're here today... let's not get short. Annually, I come before you to do the tax classification hearing to set the tax policy for the town of Wareham for FY '25. This classification hearing tonight is being held pending final certification of values from the Department of Revenue. This means that the vote will be taken, but the hearing must remain open until we receive final certification from the state. At that time, the vote should be reaffirmed and the meeting closed. The purpose of this hearing is to determine whether the town will continue to utilize the single rate for all classes of property or to split the tax rate, shifting the burden towards the commercial, industrial, and personal property known as the CIP from the residential class. Generally, an 80% residential versus 20% CIP share of the overall property makeup is considered a benchmark to begin to consider a split tax rate. This is due to the fact that with a CIP share lower than 20%, any shift results in a smaller benefit to the residential and a larger burden for the CIP taxpayer without proper support from the tax base. We have not yet reached that threshold. In fact, over the past decade, our res-to-CIP ratios have actually inched slightly towards the residential class. As of FY '24, there were approximately 110 out of 351 communities that have a split rate, so approximately 1/3. Only 14 communities actually have a small commercial exemption of the ones that do a split rate. I have here a CIP history in a chart form that basically shows that at least over the five... past five years, we've gone from an 83.2 residential ratio and 16.8 CIP up to an 85 versus 15 CIP. Not much shift, but when we do shift, it seems to be in the residential way. The CIP breakdown percentage of total, I think, is important for us to understand that of that 15%, 8.51% is commercial, 1.86 is industrial, and personal property is 4.63%. And these are percentages of our total valuations for all of our property here in Wareham. For fiscal 2025, our average residential value has risen up to $463,000. Average commercial value is $915,000, and the average residential value is $1,009,000, and that's all rounded to the closest 1,000. That's up from last year, where our residential value was $424,000. The average commercial value was $737,000, and the average industrial value was $796,000, rounded to the nearest 1,000. We are in the midst of getting towards the end of a five-year revaluations, which is part of the reason for the increase overall, as well as the market. I have used the single-family residential and commercial values as benchmarks in my shift illustration that you have in front of you. And just very briefly, right now, they're kind of estimating based on what we have now for documents in the system, pending the final certification. We're estimating a tax rate of $156. When I actually did this report, it actually shifted a penny, so we're looking at $1,855 at this point, which is down from $9.23 from last year. So, it's come down significantly because our values have gone up so much. Just as a side note, our tax rate has come down like every year for the past like five years as the values from the market have increased. It kind of balances it out. If we were to do the 1.1 shift, which is the lowest shift to the CIP, the residential average would save $69, and it would react in a increase for the commercial of $778. Conversely, at the very top, which would probably be around 1.5, the residential would save $352, but the commercial increase would be $3,916. And that's for an average commercial.
I'm sorry. You read in that the 1.1 residential shift would increase... I think you said 778 in the document you gave us. It says 788.
Did I transpose my number? 778?
Yeah, and you've written... you had 788 in the document that you sent to us, so it should be 778.
I'm sorry. I was reading from the chart, so I must have... yes, I must have transposed that in the...
Yeah, thank you.
In the narrative part. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Just clarification. Thank you.
Ms. Judith, the teacher...
Got me. I apologize for not catching it sooner.
So, the summary and considerations that we talk about every year is when we split the rate, it does not increase the revenue to the town. It just shifts the burden from the residential class to commercial, industrial, and personal property. Well, things that we need to think about would be that it might make Wareham less attractive to new development and small business relocation. The shift would impact summer residents, and their personal property taxes would increase. Many of the town's commercial properties are leased, and landlords typically pass the increase on to tenants, thus impacting our smaller businesses, which are typically locally owned. Cranberry growers and farmers, their values are reported under the commercial, so they... you see, their tax bills go up as well, even though they're in agricultural. I think if we were to decide to move towards adopting a split rate, I would need time to update the way our data is set up. We have always been a single tax rate town, and in order to make sure that when... and if we ever do a split rate, that we have our data in order for proper allocation of the two different tax rates, I would need... would want some time to go through the whole database and make sure that that's set up and the property is classified properly. We also may want to consider whether a small commercial exemption is appropriate and what it would take to manage that, to implement it, manage it, and move it forward. As I mentioned before, out of the 111 communities that do have a split tax rate, only 14 have a small commercial exemption, and I'd be interested to find out more why so few have that. One thing I will say about the communities that do a split rate, if you... there's a lot of really good information online at mass.gov, including a map that I found that kind of showed where the split rate towns are. And one of the things that it kind of shows is they're either larger cities, or they're congregated around cities, like out in Springfield, Pittsfield, Worcester, around Boston in the North Shore. All tend to have split rates. They're also much different in demographic and economic than us. And finally, I have some community comparisons here for you. In Wareham, for 2020... all of these statistics are for 2024 because that's the information that's available at the state level. Excuse me. For 2024, we had 9,000... 9,493 single-family parcels. Our average single-family value was $423,822, and our single-family tax bill of average was $3912. You notice from the average that we have now, with the 856 tax rate, it would be $3,0963. That would be the difference. And then there's some other communities around us, Bourne, Carver, Marion, Mattapoisett, Middleborough, Plymouth, and Rochester. Of all of those communities, it's not hard to imagine that our single-family tax bill is indeed the lowest. They range from 5711 up to 8,869 for those in Marion. Our tax rate history, 2021 was $1116, and it has dropped every year down to what we estimate to be 856. One last thing I'd like to say is that the state average tax bill in 2024 was $7,399, while ours was $3,912. So, we are still among one of the lowest single-family average tax bills. It won't be say rate, but average tax bills around. And where for FY '24, Wareham was one of the 50 communities with an average bill between $3,000 and $4,499. Only nine communities had a lower bill, and 292 communities had bills higher than ours. And this is all based on the average single-family tax bill. But it gives you an idea of where we fall in the overall Commonwealth.
How many did you say have higher than us, again?
292. It's in your...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Looking at this other part.
I've been looking at these numbers a little... a lot, so... Also, while I'm sitting here, before I call for the... I just want to let you know that as far as the revaluation is concerned, I usually tell you how our values have changed year to year. And the overall change this year for residential is up 11%. Commercial is up 24%. Industrial is up 23%. And exempt is up 31%. The exempt is up so high, much higher, because we actually had to update all our rates and tables and costs for... and we have new schools, and that added a lot to that. And that is what I got. It's up to you, Jarrett.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Comments from us, or no?
I have a question, if I may.
Now... oh, sorry. Can you... yeah, hang on a second. Do you want to let her go first?
I'll let her go first.
Go ahead, Sherry. Ms. Quirk?
So, my question is, if we were to go to a split tax rate, and that would, as I understand, result in lower taxes for residentials, right? result in lower taxes for residenials, right?
Correct.
How would, how would the decrease be allocated among, you know, various values of houses from high to low? In other words, do higher taxed property owners get a greater, greater increase because it's proportionate, or is the decrease allocated more to the lower-cost houses?
So what it does is it actually changes the tax rate. And since the tax rate is what's changed, it goes across the value equally.
Okay. So at least theoretically, this, one could say, one could argue that this benefits people with higher, higher-value homes than lower-value homes, at least, you know, on a, like a lump basis.
Well, inasmuch as the people with higher-value homes pay more taxes based on their value, then I suppose that would be, correct? But I mean, if you have a house that's valued at $900,000, obviously, your tax bill's going to be higher than somebody who has a $300,000 house. So the savings would be equitable based on, because you'd both be paying the same tax rate.
Right. Now, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think what, yeah, what she's saying is on a million-dollar house, you get more dollars back than somebody on a $200,000 house because your proportionate tax bill, correct?
Correct.
Yes. So that's, that's what I'm trying, thank you for asking it so much better than I did. But yes, I'm, you know, I'm concerned that this does not benefit people with lesser resources to the degree that, that I would like to see.
I think I understand your, your comment, and I think that we've tried to start addressing that by coming before town meeting to work on our exemptions and perhaps can consider, continue to do that and mark on some exemptions, options that may be available to us. It's something that we can keep looking into.
Thank you.
I just would like you to clarify if, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
If there were to be a split tax rate, my understanding is that small businesses would be penalized more than big-box stores because the tax increase to the property owner is obviously going to be passed along to their tenants. So my concern is that a shift would essentially really hurt our small businesses in this town. And because we are a, a community that doubles in size in the summertime, and many of those businesses are locally owned and depend on the summertime for making it, I'm concerned that that would be an issue that we would be, that that's an unfair burden at the moment.
Well, I think that's, that's really something to consider because you're right. I mean, the, our small businesses are the heart of our community, and it's why a lot of people come here and live here. We've been lucky, and we've had a lot of development over the past 10 years, but we still have a lot of small vacancies throughout the town. If you drive downtown, you drive through Onset, you drive up to parts of Cranberry Highway, you know, those places need support in order to develop and continue. One of the things that I kind of make a point of is that, you know, our industrial base is very small. It's under 2%. And the commercial is, is not that much greater. I mean, we're at 15% of the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And one of the things that we might be looking into is broadening our commercial-industrial base, maybe even industrial, so that we can spread out any shift in the future to that base. But we don't have that yet. And maybe that's where we should be focusing as well. It's almost like we need to do this, to do that, to get here, to do this.
Thank you.
All right. So everyone knows me, I'm, I'm cheap. I like to save money, trust me, unless it's on food or tools. So the, the one thing here, though, is if we move to a 1.5 split rate, that's going to take and save me $352, but John Smith, who owns plumbing and heating, is going to have to spend an extra $3,917 a year.
Right.
We have more small, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have more small businesses in town than we do big-box stores.
Yeah.
I believe so. Those small businesses are the ones that give back to the youth in the community. When I was running the Tigers, every small business I ever went to had no problem giving money. Every box store, I literally had to go through, I might yell that for, through hell, to get 50 bucks out of them. So for us to slam the small businesses, I just don't think it's right because they're the ones that give back to the community. If there was a way to do like a exemption somehow, then I'd be interested in looking at it further.
Unfortunately, we don't get to pick and choose.
Yes.
Which ones we throw the tax bills at.
Yep.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, being a part of the WRA, the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, has really emphasized for me, those vacancies that you've been talking about, we're currently focused on Main Street. And we just had a business close down. You know, the Scarlet Rose closed. And I would hate to do anything that would make it even more difficult for those small businesses to keep afloat or to keep small businesses from moving into the vacancies that we were hoping to fill on Main Street, Cranberry Highway, et cetera. So I, I don't think the split rate is a good idea.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, just to look into this further, I'd be interested in creating a, a small study group to look into tax rates balances between businesses and residential using, you know, stakeholders of small businesses and homeowners to bring recommendations back to the board before the next year's tax classification hearing. Sorry, I've got a sore throat. Maybe something we can look at possibly in one of the meetings in the future to come up with, but I think it'd be a smart idea to start studying to see if there's a way we can do it, if it's even possible, so we're not hurting the small businesses.
Thank you. I just want to say, I very much appreciate, and other people do too, the two articles that you brought before the October town meeting, which impact a small portion of people in this town, but they're an important portion of the people in this town. And I, those were passed unanimously, I believe. And again, it's, it's a way of trying to help those people who live here, who, you know, we're trying to make it a livable community, I guess is what I would say. I'm going to, because it is a hearing, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the, make a comment on this. And yes, please step forward and identify yourself. And, no, if you would let me know if there's anybody online later. Okay.
I'd love to know if anybody raised their hand.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Excuse me, board members. My name is Brenda Ekstrom. I was very happy to see the proposed valuations. I think it's a good start. I have been clamoring for the past few years that, and I don't know if any of you have looked at the assessments, but we have not increased the valuations on the commercial, industrial, personal property side of this in at least four years. This is the first year that we've done it. For someone who likes to squeeze six cents out of every nickel, this should appeal to you, Jared. I'm sorry, Mr. Chadwick.
That's fine.
The residential property taxpayers, in a nutshell, have been subsidizing the commercial property for at least the past four years, that I have been keeping track of this and reporting it. I went to FinCom, I went to the Finance Committee Chair, I went to the Board of Assessors, because what they have been doing is they have not been increasing the valuation of commercial property while they have been lowering the tax rate. So if you multiply 100 times 10, you get 1,000. 100 times 9, you get 900. That's what they've been doing to the tax rates of commercial properties. Whereas our houses have been increasing in valuations. And so what's been happening is that when our houses have been going up, and people complain, they say, but the tax rate has gone down. But when you calculate it out, our taxes have still gone up. And while we look at the taxes, and we say, oh, we're the second lowest out of these 10, the other nine, their fire departments are included, they don't have districts. So if you add our districts in, instead of being the second lowest, we're the fourth highest. That is a big difference. And so our rate goes from 39 to almost 6,000 when you add that in. Now, I'm not saying that that's the town's fault or the district's fault. I'm just saying when you add the total in, and I didn't get into, oh, Marion pays for their, their taxes, I mean, their trash is included, but you have to pay for it here. I didn't get into those ones. I just got into the major departments. And fire is a big one, whether you're paying for it through the town or you're paying for it through a district. So I think that those have to be looked at. I also think that while we're looking at, you know, how it's going to hurt small businesses, there is, it's, let me get it here, it's Mass General Law, Chapter, Chapter 53. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I have it here somewhere, but it's Mass General Law, like 59, 50, Section 53, or the other way around. I have it, I can give it to you after. That does allow for small business exemptions. If you make under $1 million, so proprietor, which would be a plumber, or you have less than 10 employees, I think, but you guys get to set those parameters. Have less than 10 employees, make under $1 million, those things. And then you set that they can get less than 10%. And then that extra burden is carried by the big-box stores.
Do you know which Mass General Law?
Hang on. Yeah. So I'm going to ask you, that you've brought some interesting comments to the table, and I think that's partly what you were talking about earlier, as well as you making suggestions that we explore the options that are available to us.
And I appreciate it, but every time I try to bring it up, I've been shut down, whether it was at town meeting, whether it's been at an assessor's meeting, whether it's been, quite frankly, at pretty much any place I've been. So that's why at a hearing, I have the ability to talk about this.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Yep. Could you, when you find that chapter, could you just send it to us?
Yes, absolutely.
An email? Thank you so much.
Madam Chairperson, I apologize. Just while the person's there, I just want to make sure, I think, I'm just going to give them an opportunity, because I might have misheard. Did I just hear that when you include the fire districts, we have the sixth-highest in the Commonwealth?
No, I said out of the 10 that she has, that is in her list.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I got, you gave me a heart attack there for a second.
We are the fourth highest. We are the fourth highest, no.
Sorry, Ms. Ekstrom, that's what I heard that for a second.
The other thing is that.
Excuse me, one second.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. There are lots of figures that have been presented to us in, in a document that Ms. Nichols prepared for us. We have heard your comments and your concerns, and I, this is not a back and forth. You were here, you were invited here to make comments on the presentation, and I appreciate that, that you have done that.
Yep. And I am, and I was, and that's all I, I wasn't looking for a debate on them, I'm just giving you.
Yep.
These facts, and I can give you the supporting documentation. I, I just got these numbers today, this afternoon. So I worked, that's why this is the way it is, but I can give you it all afterwards.
Mass General Law, Part 1, Title?
It's, is.
Chapter 59, Section 51?
53, I think it is.
We, we'd be happy to.
But I will, I will find it for you, Mr. Chadwick. I have it written down on one of these things. And the other thing is that with a recent change in federal taxes, people in Massachusetts, and I'm not saying that this pertains to.
Okay, this does not pertain to the.
No, it does, it does. That people in Massachusetts, residents, can only deduct up to $10,000 on their residential taxes. Now, this doesn't apply to me, I don't have a house that that is worth that, but there are several people that their houses, the taxes are over $10,000, and they can't deduct anything more than that. Businesses can deduct all of their taxes as a business expense. So that's another reason why the businesses can carry that burden better than a residence.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and the last thing is that businesses, I understand that we have lost businesses, either, the one you were just speaking about.
Scarlet Rose.
But you also have to realize is that, that also has to do, and I'm not talking about that one, but over on Cranberry Highway, the DeAngelo's went out of business. A company bought that. They bought, they bought it, and they're looking to lease it. They don't want to sell it, they don't want to put anything into it. They're looking to lease it. And if I remember correctly, someone who was looking at it, it was an astronomical amount to lease. So they are just sitting there with it, they don't care if they, you know what I mean? Because they want their amount. There's another person that owned several parcels. So those are also, they don't care if they rent them or not, because they own them, and it doesn't matter to them. So while we look at vacant.
Bless you.
God bless you. While we look at vacant places in town where there are, you say, we really need to get these, the owners have no interest. If they can't get their $4,000 or $5,000 a month, I know someone who's desperately looking for a piece of property on Cranberry Highway, and the amount that the people were charging, they couldn't, they couldn't afford it. And the people would not come down on the price. So there's also that greed aspect of a corporation or an LLC that would rather have lost than have someone in there. So that is all. Mr. Chadwick, if you are Madam Chair, if you decide to go forward with a group, I would love to be on it. I have been researching this, and I just want to let you know that in 2014, we were at, the CIP was at 18.5%. And since 2014, I have only seen businesses explode in this town for the past 10 years. And yet, now we're at 15%? That just doesn't make sense. So I really think that we need a real, true valuation, and it has to be done annually because we can't just let residential properties get three, four, five years of valuations and not that commercial, because it is that residents are subsidizing businesses.
Thank you so much. Ms., you can send that email to us if you don't mind. Yeah. Okay. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments on the information that we've been given? No, is there anybody online? Please raise your hand if you are interested.
Jim Menese?
Yes. Let him in, please, Mr. Menese. And would you identify yourself for the record, Mr. Menese?
He's rejoining the webinar right now.
Yep. Yep.
Hello, my name's Jim Menese, Precinct 4.
Can you, we can hear you, but we can't see you. Do you have a video?
Yeah, hold on here. I'm quite the sight, but that's okay.
There you go.
How are you doing this evening?
Good evening, thank you. Would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Jim Menese, Precinct 4, Wareham. I'd just like to know what towns surrounding us, surrounding us do have a split tax rate?
The only one is Carver.
And Fairhaven also, I believe.
Dartmouth.
Well, they're not, they're not surrounding us. But further down, yeah, Dartmouth does, Fairhaven does.
And I believe the split, as far as the, relative to the total value of the real estate, is like 15 into 85 in those towns. I could be off by a percent or something. So it is something to consider. I don't know if that was mentioned, that there are towns nearby that do utilize a split tax rate. I think New Bedford does, too. I could be wrong there. I looked that up earlier today, and I don't have it on hand. I just wanted to bring that information forward, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Menese.
Good night.
Good night. Is there anyone else who would choose to make comments on the information that we have heard this evening? Noah? No? Okay.
We have, we have a hand.
Another hand? Okay, go ahead.
Is Claire, I'm going to butcher this, Tenaglia?
Tenaglia, yep.
Hi. Sorry for the dark spot here.
You're going to have to identify yourself for the record, please?
Yep, my name is Claire Tenaglia, and I am a seasonal property owner, actually two properties now, and a couple of things. How will that split, how will it affect us seasonal property owners? And I also would like to thank Brenda, because she has helped us navigate all these possible changes. So thank you very much, Brenda, for all you have done for us seasonal property owners at Swiss Beach. But what happens is, our taxes are 5,000, 6,000 in our area, and we use absolutely no services at all. So how does that help? And another thing is, wouldn't you give breaks to people and try to revitalize that downtown area or that Route 6? I mean, what you're proposing doesn't seem attractive for a small business owner or for anyone that wants to even come in to the community. And I know that you like to take care of the year-round residents, but we're losing that seasonal beach, you know, resort type of area. We're just losing it, and it's sad. And those other areas, you go to Marion, you know, Buzzards Bay, they have, even onset is better. Our area is just going down and down and down, and it's sad. And every time I watch one of these meetings, I can't even believe what's being proposed. You know, you try to hope that it gets, things will get better, and it'll get built up, and I do hope, and Derek knows, we hope to fix our beach area, because it's just an eyesore, and it's a danger to the public. But, I mean, what about the people that pay all those taxes and they receive absolutely nothing? Not even a street light, not even, I mean, the roads are dirty with sand. It's just, it's not good. It's not good. People have been complaining about the big dips in the, in the dirt roads. I don't know. It's just terrible. It's a terrible thing. You know, it's never anything good for the area. It's always against the homeowner. And I'm sorry, that's how it is. And you want to take care of all those people that can't afford it. I think we have enough low-income housing. I really do in Wareham. There's plenty of, there's plenty that you do for people that don't have the income. What about us? Thank you. And thanks again, Brenda.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Tenaglia. Is there anyone else who chooses to speak on this issue? Mr. Noah, if you could let us know. Sullivan? The other Mr. Sullivan?
I do not see anybody.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have heard comments from the public, as well as comments and questions from this board. And so I would ask Mr. Chadwick, we are going to hold this hearing open, that's my understanding, until we get the proper documentation to have you...
Are you going to record a vote and affirm the vote at the next meeting?
Yes.
You're going to vote?
Yes, we will at the next, when we, well...
I move to adopt the residential factor of 1.0 for fiscal year '25 and continue the hearing until the receipt of the final certification of values.
Thank you. Motion made in second. Is that okay with you? Excellent, okay, thank you. There's a motion to adopt the 1.1, 1.0 rate and to keep the hearing open. And it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? And hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes. It is so. Now, so the public knows, Ms. Nichols and her office are waiting for information from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
We are, we are in revaluation this year, and as part of the revaluation, we have to do certain steps. We have preliminary certification of values at this point in time. We are in what they call disclosure, which is where people are looking at values, making sure everything's good. That disclosure ends on the 25th, and then I will submit the final documentation to the state. They will review it, and when they are done with their review of that and our growth and our other documentation, they will tell us that we have final certification. At that point in time, we can reaffirm the vote and then sign in the LA 5, and then I can submit that for the next step in the tax rate setting process.
Thank you. And in conversations with town treasurer, clerk treasurer, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Bowen, and Ms. Nichols, we have, we will be holding a meeting on the 26th of this month, presuming that you have the information. That will be the only thing on that night's agenda. If you don't have the information, the next meeting we would be holding would be on December 3rd, and we would be able to ratify what we've done this evening at that point.
We're going to try to get it done as soon as possible for everybody.
Okay, thank you so much for your, for your presentation, and thank you for the information. It's very much appreciated. I think... Mr. Farady, are you here? Mr. Farady?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Farady. You're here to talk about, and I apologize, we have your wrong title on the agenda. You are the Land Use Coordinator for the Commonwealth, for the town of Wareham. You're going to be talking about some information that you received a couple of weeks ago or a week ago or something like that, about accessory dwelling units, as well as the seasonal community designation. And it's really, it's a presentation, we will probably ask you some questions, and I know a lot of the information is, it's still in flux. So if you would identify yourself for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Josh Farady, Land Use Coordinator for the town of Wareham. Thank you for having me tonight. Town Administrator Sullivan and Counsel, Mr. Bowen. I would like to just take a brief moment to thank Lieutenant Gerard for his bravery. It is definitely admired. Thank you for your service. So as I understand, the, oh, Noah, can you please give me the ability to share my screen? The select board was given a PowerPoint presentation that was created by the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. And I will share that presentation with the members now. I will try to be quick and brief at the same time, as I think you will realize that the Executive Office has done very little for us. But with that being said, let's move into the presentation. So I'm going to skip over the agenda and just skip to some of the more important slides. On August 6th, the Affordable Homes Act was signed in by Governor Moore Healy. The two sections that we will be discussing are Section 7 and 8. One of them establishes ADU laws, and the other section establishes the definition for that law. The definition section went into effect immediately, and the actual law for ADUs goes into effect February 2nd of 2025. So the question is, what is an ADU? It is a secondary residence on a property, a single-family residential property, that is now allowed by right in a single-family residential zoning district. They go through a few of what these ADUs may look like. They can be detached or attached to the primary structure. They could be in an upper level, a lower level. It could be a conversion of a garage or something above a garage. The goal of the Healy administration is to create additional housing, understanding that the state is in need of it. Their goal is 8,000 to 10,000 in the next five years, and I think it's an admirable goal that they will probably end up hitting. So again, the first section is already in effect. That is just the definition, and the actual law is being enacted February 2nd. So we have some, we have the definition here, and the definition is important because it does put some limitations on the accessory dwelling unit. It says that it can either have its own entrance that is attached to the house or detached from the house, but that entrance has to meet the state building code. One of the requirements of the state building code is that it have a fire block between the two. The size of the ADU is also limited within the law. It says that it can be no greater than half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. Where you'll see this really play an effect is for your small houses in onset, Briarwood, Swiss Beach, they will be restricted to probably what is half of their dwelling, where bigger houses will be maxed at 900 square feet. And then it also goes on to say that you can't unreasonably restrict the creation of the ADUs or the rental of the accessory dwelling unit in terms of short-term rentals. So a couple highlights. It has to be on the same lot as the principal dwelling. So if you own two lots that are right next to each other, you have a primary residence on the one and nothing on the second one, it does not make you eligible to put your ADU on that second lot. Again, this is the floor area, we went over that already. No unreasonable restrictions. So they tried to come up with a list of, well, they have a list of uses that are already protected, and those protected uses basically strip the local zoning of its ability to zone them out. That's located in Section 3 of the Zoning Act, Chapter 40A. And this, the ADUs are going to be protected use as well. Excuse me, I think my kids have made me a little sick here, so I may cough from time to time. So a few big takeaways from this is, if we are, when we allow ADUs, again, it's something that we can't not allow, they're likely going to go in front of site plan review and front of the planning board. Unless that site plan review requires a variance, which will push them in front of the zoning board. And it's likely that some of the restrictions on these ADUs will be that they have the same setback requirements as the underlying zoning district of the single family. An important thing to note is, the state says that you cannot require owner occupancy of either the primary dwelling or the ADU. So it is possible for someone to come in, buy a residence, establish an ADU, and rent out both of these, these livable areas. They also say that we can't limit the parking to the ADU by exceeding more than one additional spot. And it also goes on to say that if your ADU is located within half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, the one, the one parking spot is not required at all. Again, we can't over-restrict these. It's likely that they will go site plan review, and then for more than one ADU, it will require a special permit. Again, can't require owner occupancy or the additional parking space. So where are we at in this whole process? The Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, they don't have a way to review bylaws, as you would see with the MBTA communities. Their plan is to work with cities and towns to provide helpful information, but as of today, they haven't given us any guidance. And with the deadline of February 2nd quickly approaching, we might not see any guidance from them. So if and when we do come through with regulations, it will have to go to the Attorney General's Office. That's a, that's a provision of all zoning bylaw changes, and they will have to review and/or approve whatever we decide to amend. And then they, they ask us to look at any ADU bylaws that we already have and see if it's worth amending those or coming up with a brand-new bylaw to accept the ADUs. So I'm actually going to exit out of the presentation now. I do have some guidance from another community that has passed ADUs recently at their own town meeting. And I have kind of a runaround of what we've been working on in the, in the planning office as well, if the, if the select board would like to hear those.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just give me a moment. Excuse my dog. Just give me a moment to pull it up. So I think what you might see is some of the regulations that come forward to the town as a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. Of course, we're going to cover some of the things that they've already identified in the definition, a limit to the size, whether owner occupancy is allowed or not, some things that you already see there. Some additional requirements you might see are, is the requirement for the ADU to have a similar characteristic to the primary structure, to keep a lot of our community preserving the aesthetic that we have come to love. Again, they'll be, they'll have to comply with a lot of the already established setbacks of the zoning. You know, and a few, so these, these properties will go for site plan approval. Currently, the planning board has what we would consider a site plan review... Currently, the planning board has what we would consider a site plan review checklist and recommendations, or guidance. I believe we will have to amend this recommendation for ADUs, as it may be very overburdening for what we are trying to accomplish. I would say that pretty much covers my topic of ADUs, if there are any questions.
I have a quick question. I was confused by the short-term rental piece of it. You must allow owners of ADUs to rent the ADUs, it sounds like, but how do short-term rentals come into play?
So we have seen some communities that are trying to restrict the short-term rentals to anything not less than 31 days, to prevent short-term rentals of these units, because really, the goal of the Affordable Homes Act is to create housing for everyone, not housing for vacations, so to speak.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I think, and just to fit, because there was some confusion, people thought it meant you couldn't rent any of your homes, or anything like that. It would only be either the accessory dwelling unit on that for the short-term rental. It doesn't, if you own a home, you can certainly do short-term rentals or anything. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Derek.
Ms. Quirk, do you have any questions? I don't, are you all set?
Set.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Farady, then I would ask you to quickly touch on the seasonal community designation. Again, you gave us a fair amount of information in the packet, but if you could just briefly explain that connotation?
Yeah, I will be even briefer than my last presentation. What I did was, I took the state's guidance on the seasonal communities, and I'll just break out a few things I think are important. Excuse me. So the seasonal communities are a designation to already communities that have a very high seasonal influx. These communities are Yarmouth, Junior, Nantucket, Cape Cod, the Berkshires. Excuse me. So the seasonal communities designation is something that is enacted by an advisory council. You know, a lot of the places I just mentioned are already designated as seasonal communities, and there's some guidance on how other communities may be classified as seasonal communities. What the requirement is, is that this advisory council will take in any information that's given to them, and they will make a determination if the community can be classified as a seasonal community. And then it will also require town meeting vote to also accept the designation as a seasonal community. So one of the key takeaways that I took was the percentage of housing stock that is used for seasonal, occasional, or recreational use, or is otherwise not used as a primary residence by the property owner. I think there's no surprise that the population of Wareham almost dulls in our summer season. And then it says, "A municipality designated by the Executive Office shall accept or deny the designation by a legislative body," which I believe ours would be town meeting. So the requirements, if we were to, one, be established as a seasonal community, and then, two, accept that designation, a few of the interesting things that we may do, we can establish a year-round housing trust fund, that would be either individually or with a seasonal community that is in close proximity to us, to provide the creation and preservation of affordable and attainable housing in seasonal communities, for the benefit of year-round residents, provided, however, that the Executive Office, in consultation with the group that would, the advisory council, would promulgate rules and regulations pertaining to the membership, which they have not done as of today. The community would have to permit undersized lots to be used for creation of attainable year-round housing, provided, however, that the lot, at the time of the recording or endorsement, shall be located in a zoning district that allows for single-family residential use. Any single-family residential structure construction on the lot shall adhere to the community's floor area ratio, which could be more strict than what the accessory dwelling units have provided. And they would still have to comply with all the laws or bylaws that we have pertaining to wastewater and sewage systems. And this is one that you can actually limit the short-term rental, or the rental of, for six months, or as year-round. So the adoption of bylaws would be required to permit the construction of tiny houses, provided that tiny houses are designated for the use of year-round housing units, and they still have to meet all the requirements of the state building code. And it also mentions that they're movable, they have to be registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles. Again, this is another set of regulations that the state promised to, you know, give us some guidance on, but has failed to do so as of today.
Thank you. It's interesting that they would count them as housing, even though they're not, and mobile home parks aren't counted as affordable housing. Seems to be a little bit of a dilemma, in terms of.
You know, and Madam Chair, that was a question that was raised, is, are these new units considered affordable housing? The initial response from the Executive Office was no, unless they're deed restricted as such. And I don't see a resident deed restricting their own property to potentially rent these out for less money than what they could get. So the 10% that we're always chasing becomes a little bit harder.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for this, Josh. Your presentation and the summary that you provided, Board, is really interesting. I just wanted to note, one of the other things that would come with a designation of seasonal communities, besides establishing that year-round housing trust fund, could, part of it could be creating year-round housing for artists, which is really interesting and very pertinent to places like onset. So I think, you know, as more information becomes available from the state, I think this is definitely worth looking into. So thank you for your information.
Thanks. Ms. Quirk?
Agree with what Sarah just said. Very excited about the prospect of artists' dwellings and the enhancement of the arts community in Wareham and onset.
Thank you. I'm all set. Mr. Farady, thank you so very much for your presentation. I'm sure that we will be hearing more from you about both of the topics that you spoke about. And just a question, can you make smores on the fire behind you?
Unfortunately, that one is not real. It is on the TV. I do have a pellet stove that is keeping, I have a pellet stove that is keeping our house at a nice 72 degrees, but I can't cook smores on that one either, unfortunately.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Got a laugh out of us. Thank you.
I was hoping it would draw the attention away from my big forehead.
I was looking at the flames, and thinking.
Mission accomplished.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Farady, and thank you for joining us. It's really much appreciated when our full-time employees of the town come to our meetings, or finance committee meetings, or any other meetings, and I'm not sure the public understands that they work a 40-hour week, on top of having to come before us. Town Administrator's report, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. I'm going to try and just share some pictures from today's, let's see, today's venture down to Bayview Park. Are you able to see it?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just update for Bayview Park. As you know, that's the project going on in onset. These are some of the new sidewalks that are going on, making this an ADA accessible location. This is towards the Buzzards Bay, the bathhouse over there, which has been, actually, it meets up nicely with there. Unfortunately, for the time being, until this is done, until the spring, we know that there's a limited accessibility to it, so we really appreciate their working with us on this. Next slide is just coming a little bit further back, showing the new pave, the new sidewalks, going with the edging and the broom swept. I gotta tell you, they look great. And then you'll see some of the ADA little markings over there with the bumps, and in yellow, that's all part of making ADA accessible, and I don't think you can see my pointer, but if you can, these are some of the, you'll see a little bit better further on, these are some of the stairs going up, where it used to be that really high and steep area. Those are some of the stairs that are finally coming together. The reason why I'm so excited is I'm really visual, and as they were showing me the plans all along, I was kind of oohing and aahing, but until I see it really in person, it's really tough to tell. So the next slide is, this is continuation of the sidewalk, and I would say, Select Board member Corbett will be excited to see that we did keep the bike rack over there in the left-hand corner. But this is telling you, we're getting wider sidewalks, and really much better for mobility. I know there's a lot of care for those zebrics, but between the maintenance on those and constantly lifting those, I will tell you, are really a maintenance and nightmare for people with restricted mobility. And this is where we're getting into some of the fun ones. This is part of the path that would be going for the ADA accessibility, that's going zigzag across the front there, and you'll see it's starting, it almost looks like the bottom of the ocean, if you will. So there's some of the sand dollar imprints, and some other features, which really, and a slight tint to the concrete, which is just, it is coming out beautifully, and I can't wait to see it the whole way. This is further, this is one of the sides, continuing on the ramp, which would be the upper portion of it, and you'll see, it just, it seems to really frame the whole area beautifully. These are, it's a staircase that used to be, there wasn't anything in that area, so you can see sort of the meandering slight turn to it, if you will, and again, it's framing up the area beautifully. And so you'll see there's stairways in between some of the ADA accessible ramps. This is really great, and we'll try and get a little bit closer. If you see where the, where the backhoe is over there, that is about how wide the path is going to be, and I don't know if you remember coming down there beforehand, where you really, it was tough to squeeze by one another. That is coming out fantastic, and we're really excited for the width of that. One issue we did run across is we're having to, we're going to take down, have to rebuild the granite wall, and the portion that you see dug out in front of you, that was not granite, that was cement. And what we're redoing is, with granite that we have in stock from municipal maintenance, we're going to continue it, so that really is a showpiece center for the onset village. And I think that's gorgeous. We do, we made, we had not planned on doing that, but during, with some of the work, we realized that the wall was not strong enough to hold up, so we're going to have to do a change order on that, and may need to transfer at, I'm thinking, the January town meeting, perhaps some money for that, for transfer funds. I'm just going to double-check, we did have a slight cushion in there, but I would rather have the money available, and again, we think that's a key piece for the envelope of onset village.
Mr. Sullivan, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Could you refresh my memory? What is the source of the funding for this project?
There's a few levels of it. There is, one is community preservation funds. The other is CDBG grant funds, and then the third is the ARPA funding, that you, the Select Board voted for.
Okay.
So if we were to seek, you know, a free cash transfer on there, that'd be sort of the fourth. So we've really pooled a lot of resources to come and bring this together, and I can't wait for this to truly be done. Just walking along those areas, it feels, and the plantings that are going to be done are fantastic, but it just, it feels so much different than it was before, and you're walking up there, and just the vistas, for some reason, seem even better than before. So I'm really excited for the community to get to experience this park.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
The other thing, just real quick, I think, because I know the individual, I just think it was, I think there might have been some frustration born of it, you know, as we're talking about onset, some of the parks. I just, I think I need to remind folks that recently, you, you, the Select Board, and I know spring was far away, Corrin, you voted to use over 3.7 million, approximately 3.7 million dollars of ARPA funds for the Swiss Beach neighborhood, to make sure that they did not have to go to the grinder pumps. That was funds you could have used anywhere, and that was not sewer funding, that was funding from you, the Select Board, the grant, to make sure that that worked. In fact, I attended Senator Pacico's retirement party, where he received an award for that, and we appreciate his help in working with the MSEP to get the scribing process allowed for it, which was developed by Mr. Warren, but I have to say, you, Select Board, within the last year, putting 3.7 million into that area was really a fantastic boon. So I can understand some of the frustration with folks, but, you know, I just think sometimes people forget what you've done for them lately. And you deserve the kudos for doing that, because you could have used those in a lot of other areas, but you saw the value in helping the Swiss Beach neighborhood. And I do think, you know, obviously, things are changed, there's new people buying everywhere. I just, I think we've got some really good people in this community, but also the ones moving in are desirable people, if you will, not undesirable. So I'm just thinking some of the things were missaid, but I don't want that to go on record as representation of that community. It's a good community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Liaison initiative reports, I think we already covered that. Yep. Ms. Quirk, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Not.
Thank you. Ms. Chadwick?
Nothing.
Okay. We have some minutes, please.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of October 28th, 2024.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of October 28th, 2024. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Chadwick?
Aye.
And myself? Yes, it is so, and?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of November 5th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, as written. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so, and?
I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion made and seconded to adjourn, it is not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes. Thank you very much, Wareham. Good evening, and again, congratulations to Mr. Lieutenant Gerard, and thank you to our town employees for joining us this evening.
Good night, everyone.